What I would do is check in with Steve Luntley to get the white hat pass. I'll add it to my list of people. Thanks for another sign. Yeah, for some reason. Oh, Doug Gordon.
And Ellen always has it in the office too. So if you have something particular that you need, just go to Ellen. She can figure it out pretty well. Because we're just locked into the staff one here. So I couldn't even tell you what it is. I'm just locked in as soon as they pull my parking lot up.
This reception. I think he fills out a reception.
No reception. I do the same when I go to the high school. I don't have anything in high school.
It's buildings are concrete. They're multi-rotated structures. Anything comes from work.
Okay. Subcommittee's policy has not matched. Negotiations. Um, Tiller, Mary, and Laura, did you guys? Okay. Ethan Rack was Linda. I don't think his memory is signed. We should probably do that. Right?
We can talk a little bit about subcommittees if you want. Sure.
Let's see, what does she have that's like pressing?
Well, it's really only used in summer stuff.
Yeah, that's true. But they have summer programs now. So somebody should, I'll do it. I'll call this deal. PTO?
PTO, unable to attend some today meetings, but I do know that they had their elections. And Sharon, I believe is an EP now, she stepped down. And I forget the name of the nice lady. She was already on the PTO, but she got nominated as president. Tricia Thomas. I think it was Tricia. Yeah, Tricia Thomas. But that was kind of their last mile, so for the year now they're over.
Have a budget. We are having a budget season. Building safety. We talked a lot about that last month.
Yeah.
Adware review. About me, Unit 31 did not do. Okay. So Bucker, you are coming.
Immediately.
And Rollhead currently is staying strong at 604 students. The current number that we have incoming K is in the low 80s. Wow. I think that that's a pretty good number at this point. I think last year, I was trying to look back in June of last year, we were mid to high 80s. So we're pretty close, but the numbers still fluctuate a little bit over some time. But we've had visits to the free schools. We've had screenings. We've had kindergarten tour. We've had orientation. So I think things are looking well. I think that number is pretty accurate at this time.
I'll protect the 80s students moving out in this season. Six or seven in all, so I wouldn't be able to ask a kind of... Handcast is complete. I have to say it was a true success. So thanks to the tech department and all the teachers, especially Claire too, who organizes a lot of it. Can't wait to get the results back. Hopefully get some good scores. Friday, we had the seniors come in for the second annual parade. Kind of organized by Michaela, Steven, Catherine. Basically, we just greeted the students and it was a complete success. So students held banners, threw the kids on. It was really nice. I hope it works out.
Went to the hallways, got signs and music playing throughout the building. Very non-disruptive. Everybody was on board. It was great. We made it to the bottom of the side. And Friday, we had Future Laker Day, which I think is also in the second year. And we host Future Laker Day here. All the sixth graders, they come in, all the PE teachers, they organize... Teams where we blend Denny, Halifax, and Kingston students. And then they just kind of rotate throughout activities in the field. We have all the teachers out there on the board, the sixth grade team. And then they have a technical lunch. It really is a great event. All positive responses from pretty much everybody. And it was a good day. The rain held off. And we had no major injuries to report.
Bonus.
Lucky, we were set. Daryl Brennan was set up out there. We were all set in ready. Clues to the PE teachers that they organized the whole event. They communicated, they supported the T-shirts and set everything up. They get all the equipment outside. They really do a great job. And then everyone was lost here and it's pretty seamless. Just shipped them back by the end of the day. It's really great.
Building project. You guys can probably see all the blue, pretty much the west side and half of the south side now. So they're working three to nine. You only can see them really. You might see them around the corner.
Subside, you have two. Subside.
Yeah, it's subsiding on each end, so it looks good. But we're still trying to figure out maybe some details with Dawn, the project manager, about what exactly our classroom teachers are responsible for. So we're going to share that out at the staff meeting on Wednesday. Matt will, and I will be talking to Dawn on how far from the windows, what needs to be covered, what needs to be covered, just so the teachers know exactly what needs to be done in classrooms. So, but I think windows and doors were delivered last week. So everything's in the trails, everything's ready to go. Like I said, they're just stripping everything off, getting some siding away from, I think, the windows and doors. And then they're just going to stop opening those doors and windows. And I think it'll be after the kids get out. They're sticking to that schedule every day, so it won't depend. They're moving along pretty nicely.
There's one concerned parent that grabbed me at a baseball game the other day over the weekend. And where the seams of the Icing Baby Berry, the blue stuff meet, there's like plastic tape that pulls off. And granted, it was windy that day. When you looked at the back and side of the building, there was a lot of that plastic kind of tailing. So plastics in the ocean are bad and glittering. So we just have to try to make sure we keep the plastic in a cool set overnight.
What is it? Is it just the...
So it comes with adhesive on it? And they put like a way of clear plastic over the adhesive? And then you get ready to adhere it, you pull the plastic off and smat, you push it down? The physical pieces of the plastic are all on the place?
Because I know that they were like caulking all the seams wherever the sheets are, but...
Yeah, you walk out, you're only seeing a little bit of plastic. But creatures.
It really is. They're doing a great job. I hate to be, actually have a meeting on Thursday. So we've been having meetings there for two weeks. Just kind of talk about what's happening on our end and where they are on their end. So I know that in the beginning, we had concerns about nails. Guys get out there, pick up the nails and leave. But we have cars out there at 7:45. Teachers are there. Drop off, pick up. I told them that they need to make sure that they get their hands.
I'm proud of your energy usage, it's still on track. You're saving a lot of money. Great job. Gas is actually down by almost two-thirds versus last year.
That is great.
It was strange time at the end of fall. It was. So May 18 to May 17, it was only three degrees warmer. And we averaged 26/30 a day. And last year was 63/30 a day.
Bring house visits.
What's that?
Do house visits? Did you go for me?
It's raining.
Good stuff.
So staffing update. We are just looking to replace two positions this year. We have a special ed teacher, two that retired this year, Marlene Hebert. And we have selected a candidate and recommended that candidate to Julie. And we have agreed with terms by her, so she will be on the board for next year. I'm excited to hear that. And she also puts out a PCBA, which is...
Which is what?
Board Certified Behavior Daniels.
Oh, cool.
So the other piece of news that we have shared is that we also have a behaviors position that is posted. Ms. Sarah Peterson, who has been, is our head of behaviors, has taken a position somewhere else. So we are interviewing now. We have some very excellent candidates that we think will fit the bill. So we're in the middle of that now. So we wish Ms. Peterson the best in her journeys. She's heading to the private sector, I guess is the best way to describe it. Should be missed, but forge ahead and make sure that we have the best candidate in there.
So without bringing what business is what he's saying in sixth grade?
Yes.
And then do two kindergarten teachers are staying or replacing them or...
Right now, so Mrs. Jocelyn, yes, she's staying. And Mrs. Easter was hired as a long-term sub.
Right.
So we are just, the job was posted internally and given all the paperwork and things like that, that if there were any internal candidates, then we would need to interview them. I don't, we don't have any as of yet. So we'll just be looking at, Ms. Easter has done a great job. And if work goes well, we'll continue to move forward, offering her the permanent position. I think this is a big case. So this is what I would say in this, but it's nothing...
I didn't think there'd be any like, you know, this is what he's gonna say in sixth grade.
As far as we are on the board, we're meeting her up there. She's telling she's returning.
We're not letting her out yet. I'm sorry. I should be doing what she wants, but she's doing fantastic. Very good teamwork.
And you said Ms. Jocelyn just returned to the board. She'll be in that...
Well, yeah, so she is something bad.
And placement, just in terms of teacher placements, I mean, we just shared a couple. But also we do have a move forward coordinator system. So who's currently teaching first grade is moving on to second grade. And Mrs. Hannah, who's in second grade, is moving on to first grade. And in terms of placement, actually the placement teams, the teachers have been great. They've been meeting pretty much every week, taking their own notes from the students that they have in the classes, trying to make sure that they play students for next year. Or, you know, even when they're in classes, they've been using the feedback forms that we send out to parents. So there's a lot that really goes into it. And we try and put as many eyes as we can on it. Myself, Brian, and our specialists, our special ed teams, just to take a look at it. Make sure you, kind of make sure you, try and dot your i's and cross your t's because we look back, almost two years back worth of records. And we want to make sure like, oh, remember what happened in first grade with these guys? And we want to make sure that we keep all those things in mind. The more eyes we get on it, the better we are in process work. So the plan is to still have placement offset for the last base school. So it'll be... Except for kindergarten. So kindergarten team coming, okay, we'll set the numbers up over the summer. Handbook. Where we made some suggestions last month and some thoughts that we had for changes on, there was a lot that went along with the coordinate program review with Jill. Things that we had to do to update some of the information that had mattered in there.
When does that leave, when you sell it, we can...
We, I can double check in terms of, I mean, we post it online now, so it really is that...
Oh, you're not doing hard copy at all anymore?
We, I don't think we did this year. I think this year we just did a student agenda book.
Oh, I know what's, okay.
It was posted online. It's like 40 pages, so it really is a true killer. In terms of that, we don't need to hold up on anything in terms of print, because we're just printing the student agendas. It doesn't, we pulled the handbook out of it.
I remember the clothing.
Do you have a look here?
The handbook?
Yeah. Yeah, I can't, I can't, I'm going to update. I know that there was some discussion about the clothing. I need to do some work that you were happy with. That's all that came to mind.
Is it more page than I thought?
Yes, it is.
It's definitely a work in progress. I think that each and every year we look at areas to update or buy. Any changes that we have on there in red?
I mean, a lot of this stuff is like, when you was cleaning up, all the changes...
It really is, to be honest with you, it is.
Yeah, the only thing, I think there was some discussion about this clothing.
Did you change the...
We didn't get a copy, right? We, Kane, did you give hard copies? Because I think you said they were...
You come a less...
But I'm not sure you gave everybody a copy. I think you talked about sending it as an email. I'm not sure.
That's it.
You talked, you did that as an email attachment? I thought you said you did, but I don't remember. I don't remember saying that.
So did you, did you change the highlighted part about the dress code or no?
We did not. We have a...
Oh, you were waiting here from us? Okay.
So they still need a copy of it to be able to... The dress code?
I don't see it.
I think, I think an email. An email, right? Yeah. It's the top page mine.
Okay, you have a link? Interesting what this would be, an issue of underage children.
I don't have an issue with it at all.
No, but they didn't even have to address this.
Oh, oh, it is. Trust me. No, pass it. I want them to see what we have. No, I think, yeah. Do you need to know if they can just send it out? Do you guys want to talk about it now? Or do you want to wait until we read the whole thing and then talk about it?
I think we'll read it all.
You can do that.
I have a separate question.
Yep.
Paul to Warrenson. What are 100 value wide mouth home models? For Claire, follow her.
She's the, of the day, and I think it was Field Day, maybe? The water bottles with a prize or something?
Says school gift.
And two up in the front, and the bottom of the water, which looks scrappy. That's probably what it says.
Says school gift.
So it's from one year, gift to one year.
I think it was probably either Field Day or some sort of prizes for the kids. It's a school, it was a water bottle.
Something for school committee, school council that I pulled through. How many is it?
100.
So it's probably for all the, all the staff that's in the building, everybody. Staff and students. $100 amount.
About 350. 100 out of 350. I've got a hand for you. No, actually. You find the last... Sorry.
All right. So we're going to talk about handbook later. And that's it? You're done?
That's it. Couple of dates upcoming. June 8th, grade six step up day, middle school, 14th is Flag Day. The council on aging is looking to organize ceremony that includes students who aren't here. We had to pass, so we're working on logistics for that.
Are you sending an email to parents or they know soon they'll come?
We're just trying to figure out exactly the details. They were saying they wanted to do something over the council on aging, and then we were...
Aiding them.
So that's why we're offering maybe, if we could do it, they have a very large flag to, she would like some of our students involved.
You mean the one that's as big as the floor?
I think it's pretty big.
It is.
So we're just, we're working on the council on aging to see exactly what they're looking to order. My understanding is that it's a pretty large flag that they want us involved in. They will send out, I think they were talking about the sixth grade, because the sixth grade does have a relationship with the council on aging. They do regular visits on a monthly basis. And we've got a good relationship that we've really started fairly recently. So we're trying to keep that going. Posted as to what exactly for us on that day. It's the 14th Flag Day. June 15th is our yield day that we have here. And 21st, for school, the last day is our grade six final assembly. Parents in amazing. And June 22nd is last day of school.
Can I ask a question? I'll open the handbook. If you do make changes, is it just a simple change to it and it's already uploaded? Or are they like PDF files? Is it more complicated?
It's just the PDF that we do.
Okay. So you'd be able to just go in and change it and then you just have to...
Once we get your approval, then we'll post it online.
Okay. And then what about when the kids do step up day in the other grades? I don't know what the date is on.
Uh, 3, 14th or...
13th.
13th. Sorry, 13th. 13th. And 45?
45.
45. I just didn't know. Switch parts. Nine.
Okay. So the 21st for the sixth grade.
On Sunday.
We might all...
We will, once we get it from grade six, we'll send out the images.
Okay. Is that during the day or is it in the evening?
It's at night, 6 o'clock. And this could be your invite, as you might.
That's called...
But we'll send you a, we'll send you a call.
Hopefully it's not the last degree at night.
Don't forget, you need to be there 15 minutes. I can do that too.
Summer really, you got it? Whoops.
Do I have a second to go with any other?
I was just trying to think of that. I know, I know. It was last year. Right, yeah, it was like a video.
Oh, yeah, you were running.
Yeah. I know, yeah. Sweet. Oh, my mom. Yeah, no, I think, I think Kingston is the 20th this year. I don't actually know that I know what Denny is. I think...
It's definitely...
I know. Yeah. Probably don't remember any names.
Because you were going to go back to the...
No, it's good. I mean, you've probably already said it since now.
You haven't said anything now. That's why the invitation is in the works right now.
All right. Let me check.
You want to tweet the time? I don't know.
I can't remember it.
Dad, it's the 20th. 20th.
Huh?
Dad, it's the 20th.
Oh, so it's overlapping with Kingston.
So not our problem.
Worst for us.
That was very cute. That was very cute. So you're good. Mail that back.
I have a big plan, just like...
Go whatever time you want. Isn't level three the same? That's the worst.
Now, are you done?
I'm done. Just going to send this out.
Ms. Yulie, you're up.
Thank you.
Your exciting financial.
I'm too, yes.
Can't wait.
What I do want to mention tonight, since this is going its first meeting, in your financial package, there's a copy of our financial. And I don't remember, I'm sorry, I don't remember when this was, you started out, so I'll do the best I can. The financials and review package, the first page is the cover sheet by function code. So that's pretty much the summary of our financial. And then behind that is the detail of our financial. And this is everything year to date. We've tried to cover everything we're aware of. We've covered the table of this year, so it's extremely helpful. On the very last page, you'll see the articulation. That's kind of how we organize it. And what I did want to raise your attention is we're, we're talking a lot for them, going through the end of the year. We haven't had any huge events. But one thing I do want to raise your attention is in our utility area, in the detail on... Two of the detail, about two thirds of the way down the page, the electric account, the deficit of $1,275. Last month, that was $9,000. So this is a great improvement, but I want to let you know why. When we had the retro credit done here for lighting, and we ended up being the more responsible of payment, the co-payment for the project for four years at $1,400 a month. The town of Halifax, I'm sorry.
This is, this is a bit of sticking points.
I just wanted to make sure I shared the good news with you. The town of Halifax was able to get some rebate dollars that they were able to use towards green community projects. And what they have decided to do is pay off the balance of this project. So they have paid off the last two plus years of that project. So we'll not have that $1,400 monthly in our bill anymore. So on this bill, you see, it's the last one, but we're not paying it this month because the town has already made the payoff. So I want to make sure that everybody was aware of that. But that has worked out pretty well for us for next year. So we will have a savings in next year's budget, because we have budgeted for that a month being there for the whole year. And our, as we go further to the financial, our special education accounts, we are seeing some surpluses. And once we get your tuition, we are expecting a surplus there. What you're seeing does not include all of our circuit break money. So our expectation to be higher into the $50,000 range. So what we will be able to do is ask the town for transfer, take care of the deficit that would exist in our special education, art district transportation. And the balance, that will be returned to the town. But I just wanted to let you know, especially about what changed about. Any questions?
Sure.
So just looking over some of these items, just like the contracted premises building, it's on page two. So it says that we've only had 5% of 4.86. Is that because the contracts get signed at the end of this building?
Well, no, that's what's left. That's the percent of the budget that's left.
Okay.
So we have $5,000 off.
That makes more sense.
The balance, as it says.
Do you have any questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you have an idea of how much we're going to have on sober?
In our operating budget?
Yes.
I don't exactly know that much. I'm happy. Are you worried people will kill us or...
No, no, I just, no, if you have an idea. But next meeting, we'll have, we'll close out.
We have to close out now. And the special education tuition, we will be having a large balance that we expect to be distributed to the town. But one of our students is paying art district tuition for, their parents live in different communities. So we're able to cost share that with the other community. So that could become dilatory in the school year. So we weren't aware of that situation. So we are expecting surplus there of $50,000. That's what it is as of right now. And then we'll need a portion, we have to pay the deficit in transportation.
Right.
And that's only a street, it's a $3,500 item. So the balance will go back to the town.
Right. Which is typically where we, the ranking we land in every year.
And then art district location, I think we have about a $400 balance right now. But we'll also be returning this to town.
And we have six. What do you want to do next year?
I'm sorry, I don't remember that right now.
I think we ended up with one extra. But we didn't, didn't, didn't decide to go. It was very...
Sure, sure.
It's true. Sometimes all set.
Right.
Can I just say one more thing? I wanted to mention for you, Gordon, that on the warrants that you're looking at, on the bottom of each one, you'll see there's something, there's something noted there. And that's usually, we try to separate warrants by fund. So if it's grant, it's a separate warrant, and if it's operating budget. And then for the budget, we separate it by the line, if it's voted by the town. So the regular day, special education, transportation, tuition, and then art district location. And then we add that information, they sort of get to the town hall, they can properly account for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So in your package, we have the curriculum instruction and assessment update. Silver Lake and Unit 31 has been selected for the Educational Facility Program Review. You may recall that last month, I reported that we were working on the civil rights component of the Board of the Program Review. That's been submitted. This is a new component to the program review and... That's been submitted. This is a new component to the program review and so we're among the first schools to have completed this process. But we just completed, it is our, um, our review to the extent to which we are reading the regulations in terms of the rights of homeless students, foster care, and military involved families. And so that involved reaching out to each of the homeless liaisons for each of the separate districts, working with Christine for transportation, working with Melissa Farrell for Title One, and providing them with the necessary documentation for each of the elements that we are responsible for. Some things that you may see in the future are two potential policies as they relate to foster care and military involved families. We are awaiting the recommended policy from MASC, but that's something that we'll probably see next year, I would anticipate. So that may be an area that we need to consider. In addition, we may be looking at additional training for staff as they relate to these three areas. But the report was submitted and thank you to everyone, liaisons, Melissa, and Christine for their help in helping to compile this documentation to prove our compliance with the regulations. Silver Lake will offer the course study in skillful teaching. This is with research for better teaching. And it is a contractual obligation for our educators within the first three years to have taken this course. It is a research-based, best practices type of strategy course for teachers and it is a requirement. And we offer it, I understand we offer it every, every few years onsite, but teachers can also take it in other districts. But this will be the year that we offer it here in, in district for teachers who have not taken the course. Coordinate, coordinators, department chairs, directors.
Oh, I just wanted to ask.
Oh, yeah.
The back course, that's for all teachers across the board, every grade level?
Yes, yep. We're also soliciting summer work proposals and this will be for curriculum alignment, curriculum development. And we will use Title II A money to help fund some of those projects. We have some money from our Title II A grant that we can use for one purpose, to help us with curriculum alignment, the integration of social emotional learning as it applies to our plan for success. So we look forward to that this summer. The civil rights document review, as I, I mentioned, has been submitted to the state. We will be offering a shelter English endorsement course in the fall of 2018. And we are awaiting from the program all of the details, but I do have the dates listed here. Classes will take place on Tuesdays after school from September 11th through December 11th. So it's a, it's a big course for teachers, but it will be a great advantage for us to have it onsite and locally because it is such a great time commitment for our teachers.
Did you guys think about opening that up to other?
We will require it to.
To open it to anybody?
Yes. Now, my understanding is that we will first then register our teachers.
Yeah.
And then after a certain period of time, then...
They open it up?
Then they open it up. We're going to encourage our teachers to register.
Usually it's only 25, but then they, sometimes they get requests, RBT gets requests and then they SSI.
Are you talking SEI or?
The SEI.
Oh, okay, so yes, SEI, we're required to.
Okay. And do you know how many, how many spots you have for that?
Um, approximately 30. But again, we're waiting for the finer details to come from the state with the final approval. But they, they've given us the go-ahead to, to plan for it.
That's absolutely right.
And then Title IV funding allows us to send a team of curriculum leaders to participate in creating differentiation in inclusion classrooms using current strategies, universal design for learning, and technology. Again, providing our educators with more resources to help meet the needs of diverse learners, so they participate in that. The other thing in your packet, you will find a grant and donation summaries for the 2017, 2018 school year on the first page. It's a comparison of state and federal grant allocations over the past 13 years. And you will notice a peak in grants in the 2011 school year. And over the past seven years, there has been a decline in grant funding, and that is typical across the state. On page two, you can see specific allocations for each state and federal allocations. What's different about this page, you'll notice a difference in the two totals, is that on this page for this year, we have added the REAP, E-Rate, and Kingston Foundation for Education. And this accounts for the difference total from this page to page one. The first page of Zola is the state and federal allocations that we manage through the Department of Education. As we've added some additional grant funding to this page for the year. To the far right, you'll find the primary uses for the grants as summarized by the grant managers. And then you may notice missing from this list, so in addition to some of the grants declining, and we are anticipating a, a 4% decline in our Title I funding for next year and a 1% decline in our Title II A funding for next year. And that's just anticipatory because of the state allocation. So at the most recent grant, federal and state grant summit that I attended, that's good projection. That's, that's what we're anticipating for Title II A and Title I for next year. But what you'll notice missing that you may have seen in past reports is the special education grant 274, the special education early childhood grant 298, and the old academic support grant 625 that used to help support our MCAS programming for, let's say, extended day or summer programming as it related to MCAS. So those grants have disappeared and in addition, other grants have declined in amount, so that accounts for some of the changes. However, on the final pages of the packet, you will see highlighted the many donations and outside grants that teachers and staff have been awarded this year. And they are listed by school. So each, each page in the grant workbook, teachers and principals were asked to review and to make sure to provide us with details about the awards and grants that they have received throughout the year. The one thing missing from these reports, not included in this report, is PTO, any parent organization support. Evident, it is, it is evident that our teachers are working to supplement funding through outside resources to make up for some of these, these grant changes and differences. But that's also there for your review. And we happen to try to answer any of these questions.
Did they happen to mention, like, is it typical that the grant funding for kind of wanted to a fluctuate? Or is it steadily kind of declining? Is it an economic...
Your, your funding can fluctuate based upon populations, based upon student needs. So they changed the formula from 300 use slash to the new formula for student, for student economic status. That created some shifts throughout the state. Some people benefited and some, and some schools remained relatively stable. In general, grant funding has declined in part because of the economic changes in our state and the country. So some of it is affected by the federal climate, some of it is affected by state economic climate and politics. And sometimes it can be your own population and needs shifts that account for the changes in your grant funding. But the steady decline is more of a trend across the state. One of the things they talked about at the grant convention workshop, whatever, I think, I forget what they call it. So close, yes.
Yes.
Is the, the number of younger people and families moving south and west. And so what you see is that their grant allocations are on a rise, where as you notice with our populations, they have been stabilized, declining in some areas. And so you'll notice a shift in our, our grant funding. Which was an interesting statistic.
Yeah. Thanks.
When you're looking at, um, creative funds, they're mostly going towards salary line items, so you're getting less value as... By the, if you're paying for a full-time position this year and grants stay in the same position, costs go up. So we're funding less.
If, if the grant, if the grant decreased, then yes, you could make that, especially if it was being, so let's say if, um... Let's, let's just start with special education, the special education grant here. If it's being used primarily to fund Paris and the grant's declining, it means that we're able to fund fewer Paris. With, let's say, teacher quality, TURA, which is the grant that is used primarily for our professional development. So guest speakers like Stephen Lane or our high expectations teaching course that our administrators and teacher leaders took this past fall. Or the growth mindset work that we did this past year was funded through that grant. So that may, that may change the type and amount of professional development that we can provide. But definitely when a grant is used for positions and it shrinks, you're going to see that we're, we're not able to fund as many positions. And sometimes that presents issues for, for schools of creative solutions.
Any other questions about that? Thank you.
Thank you. So the, this is a pretty easy meeting for me in terms of, it's mostly focused on calendars for next year. So you have before you, uh, two calendars. One is our meeting schedule, our pen writing schedule, and one is the draft calendar, the school year calendar. When do you start, if it's okay, the school year calendar first? We went over the calendar for the last two months, actually. And for the, it's basically the same setup as it has been. Again, you know, we begin school for the students on August 29th, which is always of particular interest to parents. And hopefully, if I do a little better job controlling the weather next year, we will end next year on June 13th. I don't know, we were able to pull out, pull off an outside graduation, so maybe, maybe we're getting better at this, I don't know. The Christmas break is, is a pretty nice long one this year, just the way Christmas falls. Again, it's sometimes interesting, you know, depending on how Christmas falls, with, you know, how many days we get, get off. It is, it's a nice long one, so give people plenty of parents if, if, if ever for the holiday. It's, it's the same type of calendar we have had every year. The only difference, I think, this year is, and again, this past year, we tried our full professional development day on Friday before February vacation. This year, we'd like to try it on Monday after the February vacation. And again, that's mainly because of the end days in the contracts for the teachers, there's a little variety. And rather than have it be an issue, it's a little easier to move to Monday. But other than that, it's the same basic calendar we have had every year.
Sure. My name is not on it.
Oh, actually, a lot of people aren't on this, not that I'm looking at it.
Gordon's on it.
Gordon's on it, he's number one.
At least they're still on it. All right, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
And usually what happens is...
It's crap.
It does. Sorry about that, Allison.
No, it's okay.
Mostly we have, we list two of the chairs. We make, because we're not reorganizing this month here, but we don't usually print these out till a little bit later, so I don't perceive that as a big issue.
Funny, I'm too sorry, Allison. You're number one on two of the...
I get to... Can I ask one question about the calendar? When did the report cards go up?
Eight.
Report cards? Every... Sixty here, right there?
Yeah.
It does vary.
There is a... Yeah.
It's always...
It's, yeah, it's always exact, about sixty-ish days.
Okay.
I have a question, Tilla.
Sure.
Why the Thursday half-day, May 30th, the same week as Memorial Day, that Monday off?
I think that is the half-day when they're doing class planning.
That's in teacher contract.
Yeah, they have to do the planning.
But is it in the teacher contract that they have to have a day that, in that vicinity, or does it have to be May 30th?
It doesn't have to be, I believe we've always heard had it towards the end. Is it just that it's the same week as the...
It's annoying as a parent.
I think you'd rather have Friday as a half-day.
So what I was going to suggest was to have it on Friday, the 24th, and then have the Memorial Day off, so you have a half-day, then you have a long weekend.
We, it would, I perceive that being a problem because the half-day, again, teachers can leave early on Fridays, they move with the buses on Fridays. So it's shortening out of time, we actually have to do what we need to do.
On Monday to Thursday, they leave it.
So that's why they never have a half-day on Friday.
We, we, we've tried to move away from that, but it just gets complex.
I wonder if the contract says two weeks before the end of the school year.
I can't remember, but we've always...
Because that's what was this year.
Yeah, yeah, we've always had it by...
I just felt like as a parent, it was really annoying to have Monday off and then... I don't remember, because I don't remember it last year, but this year I was like, really, you guys pulled the reading?
We've always had it.
Right around Memorial Day, it's always...
Always, yeah, it's always been right around the school. And again, it's sort of a landing for the, for the next year's class.
Yeah, no, I understand that. I just find it in the same way that they have no school at all for a whole day. You know what I mean? I wonder what the contract says, like, if they have to...
I don't know, usually they have to go with the company we officially asked for.
We do, yes. So they have to leave to work on those places for the following year.
I'm not sure it says specifically, but we have always had it about that. I don't believe it does have a date in there. We usually avoid that every time.
Well, like Allison said, it could be something like two weeks prior to the following school or something like that.
We don't know when the end of school is, you have to go with whatever the official date. So that they have like two weeks to work on.
And again, it, all the schools have the same timeframe, you know, like this calendar is for all schools. So it would, you know, if, if we were to make a change here, it would impact Kingston and then also...
So is, is the calendar done at the union level meeting?
No, it's actually voted individually at each school committee, but it is the same calendar for all.
For all?
Yeah.
Yeah, because it wouldn't even work if it is two weeks to make it for following Monday because then we get off the territory that's not...
Right, that would be a hard time.
Yeah, we've always had it about them. So would you be willing or interested in making a vote on the calendar this year?
Well, if you do it, sure.
So the odds of changing that are like slim, isn't that what you're telling me?
Um, we, I, I was hoping you were telling me. I am, I'm willing to make a motion to do it because I would need to bring it forward to all the other schools.
Okay, am I the only person that finds that annoying?
I'm with it.
Okay. We, we, again, I believe it's always been this way.
I would like, I guess the story works out that you have Monday off and Tuesday, you have a half-day. So would you want to move it off a week or this day?
Well, if it's a contractual thing, then, um, I understand it can't go any later in the year, right? So if it would have to go earlier and it can't be Friday, I mean, I don't know. Even that Thursday, I feel like it's kind of silly and then to have that Monday off. Can it be the 20th or is that too soon?
20th is a Monday.
Are they, right. Do you guys have any, any input on that?
I, I, again, we, we distributed it.
So... So you got, so there's, there's a Monday half-day, Thursday, Wednesday, two Thursdays. Is that just what works out best for...
I'm just, yeah, wondering if it's also, like you just said, too labor, too work. You know what I mean, for them to, for the placement for the following year, because that's what they do with that time, right? Is they meet together to talk about placement for the following year.
Every week.
But just moving it again. If you don't have snow days, it's too late. If you bump it back into June, then you really roll.
And then if you do have a ton of snow days, if you have it too early, if you have it like mid-May and they're like...
It is a tough one. I just, I just, like, if you're a parent and you work full-time and then you have to, then you have to deal with this in one week, it's a real pain.
Yeah, but parents who work full-time, you have a more...
I know that. Memorial Day is really lots of closer to the holiday. Shouldn't.
Yeah.
So can I suggest something?
Of course, that's why we're talking about it.
Why don't you leave a moment for this year and bring it up as an issue to talk about before we talk about the schedule the next time, because schedules first, because it also might slide a week.
Yeah, maybe you change by then, yeah.
I'm just saying, it's pretty much, sounds like it's been painted out.
Yeah.
It's a little late for the change, but maybe make the recommendation for the next school calendar when we go look at next year, that it's brought as a possibility of moving on.
Okay. Other than our arguments?
I second the motion. To answer your question, we report out to parents every 30 days. So we have progress reports that go home in October that align with parent conferences. Then we have report cards that go home in December. Then we have progress reports that go home in January. Report cards go home in March with a conference. And then there's another progress report late April. And then the report card goes home the last day of school.
But is that aligned with calendar days or school days?
School days.
Okay.
Roughly at this calendar, next year, you have three weeks of school between the report card and the march reports. Right, right. So we count, we sit down, the whole admin team, we count like every 30 days. And if the third term, we try and adjust it, so this year, I think we bumped it back a little bit for the progress reports. Because we have had seven days in there. So it's roughly every 30 days is wanting to report out to parents.
And then you said there's conferences.
And October and March. And that's throughout the district.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to accept this draft calendar as the school calendar for next year.
With Allison there.
With Allison. Allison's there.
Hi.
Great, thank you.
We then have a grant, school committee meeting calendar. And this was something that we've been talking about for a while. Bob really has put in and been very helpful trying to help rearrange some of the scheduling of this. Just, Gordon, I don't know if you've heard some of this or not, but we talked about trying to meet every six weeks as opposed to every month and to spread it out a little bit, but during budget season, every month, because obviously, sometimes every month is meeting that off. So this is a calendar that is based on Old Rochester Regional School District, someone was kind enough to share, they have the exact same makeup, they have three elementary towns and then the regional. And they actually keep even during the budget season every six weeks. I don't think we could possibly do that, but this saves a couple meetings and I think the committees were pretty interested in having a little bit more time. The only thing on this that may or may not hold exact are the joint school committees. We never have tried to really schedule those like this, so there, we may need a little bit of flexibility with that. For instance, the August meeting would be involving three bids. We go out to bid for our help and, or matching up.
Subject.
And subject, and subject, completely highly exciting thing. But we do need to vote to accept those bids. So, you know, the August meeting is one that, you know, we would hope we could maybe get it done in July, but I don't think we're going to be able to have it done by then. So unfortunately, we may need to hold that. But we also may not be able to, so we'll see how that works. But for you, it would be your Halifax meetings and against the bottom left would be your meetings. And it's every six weeks and then every month for January, February, March, and April, and then it spreads back to six weeks.
Are these all Mondays though?
Yes, they are all Mondays. It's quite a puzzle to put everything together for people, because if you look at the scheduling, you can see how many meetings there are and we have not, the three of us have not yet figured out how to split in half. So it was sort of, if one piece moves, the other piece has to move. So it got a little bit intriguing, but this does work.
Do we really want to meet July 3rd?
We have to do our close-up meeting and that's the tough thing. We actually looked at the calendar to see what we could do with this, because we have the close-ups, everything has to be closed up on the 15th, so Halifax, Kingston, Silverlake. Halifax, we try to keep them somewhat near their normal meeting dates. And that's, for us, that's where it could work on the calendar, because we couldn't, we couldn't do two in one day as we're trying to do the other ones.
How soon can you have the close already? Can we do it the Monday before?
That's July 1st. We, the Monday, that's a Wednesday, July 3rd is a Wednesday.
Oh, okay, so I mean, like the.
What happens is we try to close, we're trying to include all perils, anything that happens within the buildings by June 30th. So we may not have that in our nation in time for that.
So I know from the financing side of things, we normally have a meeting set July 15th or 14th, whatever the last day is. Does that, is that meeting too soon for you?
The 3rd?
Yeah.
No, the 3rd is what we could make work, knowing that we have to close out Silverlake, Kingston, and Clifton. So.
So what's the Monday after, so Kingston?
And that's Kingston.
So that's not something we can do together?
You may be quicker to do it. The work that goes into the close-out is, we really do struggle to try to make that work.
Oh, it's an issue, sorry.
Yeah. And maybe there's another solution.
Hold on, meeting earlier on the day, on the 3rd. Eight o'clock in the morning, what?
I'm good with that.
As long as I can sleep in the parking lot.
Yeah, I mean, largely, occasionally, yeah.
We usually have some sort of.
Usually.
Yeah.
Would the, is the, would the second be better than the 3rd or would it, it be better than?
Thank you.
We're kind of open, we just need to, if we work towards that calendar as we get to the close-up, we're trying to get everything in. So that's the struggle, all the perils, and so that's the struggle for us is.
I would, I would rather it be the 1st than the 2nd.
You said the 1st might be kind of too close. There's a 2nd too close, too, that's why I was thinking the 3rd is probably the earliest.
The 2nd's better than getting, try to put it to the next week, because the next week with Kingston, Silverlake, and put to the following Monday, we, I don't think we can make that.
A Friday, is it?
The Friday, the 5th.
We don't really hold my meetings on Fridays, I'm not sure.
How about like 9 o'clock?
I think we're willing to come.
If you, the 2nd could also work, I think, we could make the 2nd work.
I just think, I think my stage is kind of.
You don't know all those kids?
No.
I was working on it, yeah.
I just think the 3rd's kind of tough, because I think there's a lot of towns around that have celebrations.
Right, I mean, the only thing with the 5th is if you're going away the 4th and the 5th off, then people take the 5th off.
But it was earlier than the 3rd, and it doesn't have to be, no, you could do it earlier than today.
I'm working on it here. I have to work, anyway, so.
You don't want to participate in the close-up?
No, no, I'll be here, but my point is like, I'm not barbecuing, I'm not going away.
If, if you're worried with the 2nd for our benefit, if we know it's the 2nd, we can work towards that.
It should be 2nd.
And that way.
As long as you're all ready.
Your honor, that is pretty.
You're just going to be your birthday with us or something?
I did just go to my birthday.
The 2nd isn't too much work for you?
I, well, we can make it work. I can work towards that.
Can I say a motion change? Will I second? 2nd?
Are we still talking about 6:00 P.M.?
On the 2nd.
On the 2nd.
Is earlier better for you? For anybody?
Well, you're still working.
I'm still working, I'll be here, I'm working, so.
What time, I mean.
Bob's working.
Working.
Is 5:00 o'clock easier? I mean.
I'll make it work.
It doesn't matter. I mean, I would love it earlier if you do it earlier, yeah.
Just for that meeting or all of it?
Just for that.
Oh, just, not all of it.
Oh, yeah, just for that. Do you want to make it 5?
I think we work towards that.
Till I 2nd, 2019, 5:00 P.M.
And you'll notice in advance on all.
I mean.
I should.
Not really, but I'll make it work.
Okay, so we have a, could, do we need to amend the motion or can we just make it all over again?
Substitute motion.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve and vote the Halifax Elementary School meeting schedule.
As amended.
As amended, July 2nd at 5:00 P.M., 2019.
3rd.
Allison's there.
Hi.
Excellent, thank you.
I'm excited to try this.
Yeah.
I think it will make our lives, all of our lives, a little bit easier.
It's hard to turn up on these.
Yep, no, excellent, it's excellent. And I think we discussed the building projects, there's a meeting Thursday.
Yep.
Unfortunately, I can't make that. And we discussed a safety. When you were counting, I just thought, was that kind of a cute story, I actually used it at the graduation, and I don't think any of you were here. So it was actually kind of fun. So for the senior Laker day, you know, the kids would come back to the schools and they walk the hall. So this year, I went over to Kingston, I did Kingston Intermediate School, and all the kids walked through and they paint their mortar boards now, you know, their hats, and all the teachers were so excited, and all the kids are out there with their signs, we're walking through and every, it's just wonderful event. And then the kids go over to Kingston Elementary School. And the principal, Paula Bartosziak, is, loves to get dressed up. She's like, she, I don't know what else to say, she loves to get costumes, so she actually puts on a cap and gown and she goes trotting through the hallway with the kids, and the kids are all kinds of excited and signs up and everything. And so when the kids were going by kindergarten classroom, a little girl went up to Mrs. Bartosziak and said, "Mrs. Bartosziak, Mrs. Bartosziak, how, what do I have to do to get one of those hats? I want one of those hats." And so Mrs. Bartosziak says, "Well, you have to keep going to school." And she's like, "How long do I have to keep going to school?" And Bartosziak said, "12 more years." And the little girl's like, "One, eight, that's more fingers than I have on cold hands." Is that the cutest story ever? I actually used that in a graduation, it was really fun.
Yeah, it was, it was so cute. So cute.
Poor kids.
Yeah, so anyways, as he was counting out the days, it just reminded me, it just reminded me of that, so it was kind of fun, it was a cute story.
That's adorable.
It really was, it was just so cute. The kids love it, it's a stereotype, they just, I mean, they just think the kids are so big, you know, you kind of.
Oh, yeah.
They are, they're huge. They're huge.
I mean, even, yeah, my kids were coming home and saying, "Oh, someone told me this on their, somebody painted Dory from Finding Nemo up there and said, 'I forgot everything already.'" And that's funny, you know, because.
Yeah, no, it was, I love, we changed, everybody wears red downs now with the gray, whatever that is, with Lakers on it, and then they're allowed to decorate the mortar boards. So it's, they do such a nice job with it, very appropriate.
Well, it's their own little personality.
Absolutely, yeah, so a lot of them, you know, where they're going to school, but you know, some of them do like very inspirational messages. One girl did this beautiful star, started 19, a big girl, which is one of my favorites. I was like, who had the hat? I was with a kindergartner, it was, they were just gorgeous. That was a lot of fun.
That's really cool.
Yeah, it was, it was great.
Can I ask one more question about the calendar?
Don't wear it, voted it.
Joint school committee, what time does?
Those tend to be before Silverlake. So if you notice, generally, other than the August 1st one.
Yes.
They're all before Silverlake, so Silverlake's at 6, so we tend to have them at 5.
And Matt, you set us emails.
Uh, always, yes. Yeah, the joint one, that calendar, we've never set joint meetings before, so this is new to us. These dates may or may not work. But we're going to give it a try.
It's good.
Yeah, yeah. We never know unless you try. And that's all I have.
Me too. All right, well, we don't need an extended session, that shouldn't even be on that.
I didn't either.
June 22nd is the last day of school, woo-hoo! And our next school committing, committing? Meeting is July 5th, is everybody okay with that?
What time?
6, they're all at 6 from here on out.
But if you want it earlier again, we could make that happen. That's easier, because it is the holiday. The day of birthday.
I'll be here. Yeah, I'm here. What about the Laker?
Do they count?
They don't, they don't have to.
Yeah, you guys, you guys don't have to come.
Great, thank you.
If you want it earlier?
I mean, we're here at 7:30, so I.
We can work towards that.
Yeah, we'd be upset.
Can we have one in the morning?
No.
Yeah.
What do you mean by morning?
The afternoon, midday.
I like to get up.
It's gonna be a really long lunch. Well, it's, it's really more whatever.
He said 4. What about Gordon, what's your schedule?
So it's like, or game week, you can have these. Yeah.
The close-up meeting is usually pretty.
It's usually pretty quick.
Well, that's why I thought we could get it done in the morning.
I can do it morning.
We don't need you for a forum.
They have it for you.
We have to tell him he's the day before is the 4th.
Yes.
So we'd need some part of.
Oh, so he's going to be hungover then, just kidding, just kidding.
All right, so July 5th.
Are we doing 4 or we have 5?
4:00 P.M.
5:00, 5:00 P.M.
5:00, 5:00 P.M. Okay, so July 5th at 5:00. Because don't you guys work till 4:30 anyway?
Long as someone gets 7:30 to 3:00, we just said, Kevin, you can't, anybody would be too upset.
That's enough time for you guys to put that down.
All right, most blue turn.
So moved.
Adios.